... meeting for Monday, January 6th. If we get a roll call, please Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Berg.
And Veen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. No announcements today. Just hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and got to spend some time with family and enjoyed their holiday celebrations. So with that, we will move on to item 2, Awards, Presentations, Appointments, and Proclamations.
2.1 is a proclamation. Radon Action Month, January 2025.
All right. Radon Action Month 2025, whereas radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that may threaten the health of our neighbors and families, and whereas testing for radon levels is simple and inexpensive, and digital radon detector kits are available to check out from the Grand Forks Public Library, whereas identified radon problems can be fixed through radon-resistant construction and radon remediation systems, whereas the National Academy of Sciences estimates that radon causes 21,000 lung cancer deaths in the United States each year, whereas radon is the second-leading cause of lung cancer in the United States and is the leading cause of lung cancer in non-smokers, and whereas North Dakota has some of the highest rates of radon in the nation, with 63% of North Dakota homes having radon levels above the EPA's recommended action level, and whereas you can create a safe and healthy environment free from the impacts of radon by testing your home and taking action this month, which is January Radon Action Month. So now therefore, I, Brandon Bochinski, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim January 2025 as Radon Action Month throughout the city and encourage all Grand Forks neighbors to test their homes for radon and take action as needed. And then again, I'll just highlight that for free, you can go to the library, check out an instant radon tester, bring it to your house, turn it on, it'll let you know where your levels are at, and you can find out more information from that. So, thank you. That's it for item 2. So we'll move on to item 3, Public Hearings and Second Reading of Ordinances.
3.1 is a public hearing and determination of protests on request for vacation of right-of-way and easements and on and adjacent to lots 7 through 12, Dink Second Re subdivision.
All right, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing portion for item 3.1. Anybody here tonight to speak on item 3.1? Please step forward. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion and open up to counsel for comment. More motions. Motion to approve from Vice President Weigel. Second, second from Mr. Friedols. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries with Osowski dissenting.
And 3.2, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinances relating to the Mid-Continent Franchise Agreement Amendment.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing portion. Anyone here to speak on item 3.2 this evening? Please step forward. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion and open it up to counsel for discussion.
Move approval.
Motion to approve from Ms. Berg, second from Ms. Lunskey. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That's it for item 3. Move on to item 4, Citizen Comments, as they relate to action items. Any citizen comments this evening? There are none. All right, we'll move on to action items. We were gonna pull administratively, didn't want to talk about 511 and 522, but certainly if there's any others that council wants to review.
Um, I'm gonna-
Ms. Osowski.
Pull 2, 3, 5, 10, 11, 18, and 20.
2, 3, 5, 10-
10, 11.
11.
18 and 20.
18 and 20, perfect. Any others that council wants polled this evening? Mr. Veen, please.
514.
514. Are there anything else? So just if you want to follow with your, just make sure that we've got the right ones. So we'll be moving forward then on items 5.1, 5.4, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, 512, 513, 515, 516, 517, 519, and 521. Is that what everybody's got? All right, we got a motion to approve.
I move approval.
Got a motion approved from Ms. Osowski.
Second.
Second from Ms. Berg. She beat you to it there, Mr. Friedols. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. So if you've got that written down, Ms. Storsted, we've got 52, 53, 55, 510, 511, 514, 518, 520, and 522.
All right, starting with 5.2, Application from Horse Race North Dakota for a site authorization at Albatross Indoor Golf Club.
All right, I don't know if, Sherri, do you want to give any more insight on that one, or maybe you had a question directly, Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, I guess I was hoping that that company would be here. I tried to do a little bit of research on, what is it? Horse Race North Dakota, and I wasn't really able to find anything. Are they the horse track that is in Fargo?
Actually, Peter Bushy from that organization is here.
Oh, excellent.
And he could answer your questions for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Bushy, please.
Hello. What specific question were you?
Um, so I wasn't really able to find anything online about your company. The only thing that I really found was like the horse track in Fargo. Is that you guys also?
Part of the mission of Horse Race North Dakota is involved with the horse track. We are a licensed organization, charitable organization in North Dakota with currently 11 sites throughout the rest of the state, from Carson, Bismarck, Jamestown, Castleton, Fargo. We have no sites in Grand Forks as of yet, but part of our mission is to support the equine industry in North Dakota as a state, but part of that does revolve around the track as well. So, but it does, none of the funds raised go toward, the eligible uses cannot be used for specific things for horse racing, so it's more about the tourism of the track and stuff like that.
So you guys are a charitable organization to promote a horse track?
No, like I said-
Like, where does your money go? Who do you raise money for? Who do you give it to?
So a lot of-
As charity?
So a lot of our money stays locally. For example, in Carson, just use one of our examples, we donate back to the fire department, to the food pantry, things like that. So our mission is pretty broad, that we use eligible organizations to stay in the towns that we have our sites at, but then we're also, we work with North Dakota State on a, on a, on cooperation with them on some of their horse programs, things like that, but it's to support the equine industry in North Dakota in general, basically.
The e-
Equine, horse industry.
The horse industry.
You know, with breeders throughout the state and stuff like that.
So what percent of the funds raised here in Grand Forks will actually stay in Grand Forks?
So per the state rules, 40% of the adjusted gross proceeds from any site, basically, are eligible for the trust account, and then basically, I mean, we take applications from all over the state. Whatever, you know, we are open to donating money back to any organization, but as long as it fits under the eligible uses, but 40% of the money that would be raised would be eligible to come back to Grand Forks.
Just eligible. It does not have to come back to Grand Forks, just eligible?
It can't be required per state rule to, like, a bar owner cannot require that the money stays here as part of the rules in gaming. That's not allowed, but it's eligible that any organization, as long as they fall under the eligible uses, could apply for gaming funds. I mean, they could do that right now, but our board looks at what is raised in that community to donate back to that community. So the short answer is 40% of the adjusted gross proceeds would be-
Has a possibility of staying.
Correct.
Has a possibility. I mean, I know that we have two of these items talking about onsite gaming, and, you know, our next agenda item 5.3, I fully support because I know that that money is gonna stay within our community and help us directly. I, I guess I do not think that your charitable organization is, I don't have faith that that money's gonna come back to Grand Forks, and I would really like to see, you know, if we continue to do onsite gaming, which I completely support. I play electronic pull tabs once in a while, but I guess I would like to see if we're doing, if our rules is that they have to be charitable organizations, that these organizations keep their funds within our community.
Sure. And the site owner had a previous agreement with another organization who ended up backing out. I didn't get into the details of that.
Right.
You know, he, I know there was talk about that he wants the same thing, but to keep some of that money local that's raised there. However, like, that cannot be part of the agreement per state rules. You cannot specifically, the bar owner cannot specifically tell the charity where that money that's raised can go.
Correct, though, they could choose the electronic pull tab machines, like, from the children's museum, if they wanted gaming, and that money would stay here in our community. And so, I mean, there are options for the bar owner to choose other gaming entities, I guess.
And he, like I said, he had chosen another charity before. For some reason, they backed out. He wanted to get going with some gaming, and he may, after, you know, this agreement is until the end of June, which is when the gaming agreements run, July 1st to June 30th, you know, he may go with another organization if he doesn't like where the funds are going. So I guess that's all I can-
I guess I am not in support of this company, although I am in support of electronic pull tabs within our community, and I would like to keep as much of that money in our community as possible, and 40% possibility just isn't good enough for me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Boucher? I was just, if there's any other questions, if you don't mind.
Yep, sorry.
And maybe, maybe this is for the staff. Is 40% typical of most gaming operations that stay in the communities?
Councilmember Veen, members of City Council, usually that's regulated by the state. They're the one who sets the rules as far as how charitable gaming's conducted within the state. What the City Council has the approval over is what organizations they allow to operate within the community, and they have the responsibility or the authority to say whether or not they feel gaming's appropriate within certain businesses in the city. There's no authority for a landlord or for the City Council to direct or have any influence whatsoever over what gaming proceeds can be done or to change or set any rules regarding percentages. It's all regulated by the state and kind of out of our hands, so.
So 40% is, as explained, is typical of all?
Yeah, would be typical of any organization.
And I think, I know I did mention this to President Sandy as well, but we should be careful. We do have a lot of local, you know, charities that have gaming sites in other cities, so I, you know, I don't know that we want to set a precedent that we're gonna decide which ones the businesses can or can't have, because other cities could certainly do that to us, too, and I think we'd get hit quite a bit harder than just keeping one gaming company out. But you are, you've received a charitable gaming license from the state of North Dakota, so they're comfortable with where your funds are getting put to use, and I think, like you said, the contract's up in June, so that gives other gaming, charitable gaming operators the opportunity to try to steal that business if they talk to the owner, and he decides to do so. So, is that be correct?
That would be absolutely correct. Yeah, like Sherri was saying, there's, there are Grand Forks charities that have multiple sites outside of, you know, outside of Grand Forks, so like you said, the reverse could be the same, but yeah, I agree with your assessment there. Any other questions?
Ms. Lunskey, any other questions for Mr. Boucher? Otherwise, we'll just, we can do our discussion, let him stand.
Quick question.
Yeah, please.
So I take it that Horse Race North Dakota is headquartered in the Fargo metro area somewhere, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Can you tell me what percentage of the revenues from 2025 were allocated outside of the Fargo metro?
I don't have that number with me.
Can you take a guess at it?
Of the, in certain, in certain towns, for example, Carson, I would say that very close to all, I think we actually probably had 100% of it stay in the town of Carson, North Dakota. Most of our sites are based in Fargo, so I would say that, based on the revenue, probably 70% stayed in Fargo and 30% went to other communities, but I would say probably close to that number was raised in Fargo as well. Our biggest, our three biggest centers are in Fargo, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Lunskey, please, and then we'll get back to you, Ms. Osowski. Or Ms. Berg, sorry, too many Tricia's.
Thank you for being here tonight. I see in the documents that were submitted that the owner-operator is looking, that this could be a temporary arrangement while they're looking to coordinate with Dare to Stand Out to pull in the Buddy Classic and work towards that. Is that correct? That it's just more temporary?
He had mentioned another, he had mentioned another charity that he was trying to, they're currently not licensed, so I don't know where they're at in that process, but he had mentioned that this may be temporarily only until June 30th, so, and I was okay with that. I mean, all of our sites are year-to-year typically, so I was aware of that going into this, so.
And then would you be able to provide us with the information on how to apply to receive some of that funding?
Yep, so there's a application for gaming funds on the state website that anybody can go to. We keep copies, and basically can leave those at the sites that we operate gaming at, but yeah, there is a application for gaming funds right on the state gaming website. I don't have a copy with me, but it basically lists the, you know, you have to list the organization, what the funds are gonna be used for, at which point I or my board make sure it's an eligible use, and then depending on the dollar amount, either I can approve or we have, I have to get board approval over certain dollar amounts, but there is a certain state, state application that you use.
Yeah, is there anyone else that has any comments? So as we'll go back to you, Ms. Osowski, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one more question, and it's probably more for our legal team. If we approve this today, does that open Horse Race North Dakota up to compete entirely in the city of Grand Forks, or are they just, are we just approving for that bar? Or then can Horse Race North Dakota solicit other bars within our community and then?
You'd have to, I would have to apply each time. You'd get an approval for any-
For each location?
Correct.
Through the City Council?
Yeah, is that, Mr. Gostad, why don't you answer that, just so we get our legal counsel?
You're only approving this one particular location at Albatross?
Okay.
If they wanted to go to another site, they'd have to come back and get the same approval from you.
Okay, okay.
And with respect to this 40%, that's all, they have to provide detailed information about their income, their expenses, to the North Dakota Attorney General's Office. It has to review all of their financial information, and that 40% is, is, the allocation is for charitable purposes.
Right.
Charitable only, and that's why they go through the exercise of having people to apply to assure that they're using that charitable portion for charitable purposes, right? And that gets checked by the Attorney General's Office as well.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve from Ms. Berg. Any, second, second from Mr. Friedols. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries 6 to 1 with Osowski dissenting.
And 5.3 is application of Grand Forks Children's Museum for site authorization, and I may have Sherri pronounce this for me. Del, la dela, oh, you say it.
Las delicias de la abuela.
Close enough.
I only have a comment on this one, and I'm ready to vote. I'm really proud of the children's museum for coming up with different ideas to raise your own funds and separate yourself from the taxpayer, so I greatly appreciate that, and I support 100%, and I move approval.
We got a motion approved from Ms. Berg, second from Ms. Lunskey. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.5 approved, the continued work on city facility security, public works facility, and mosquito control.
Mr. Johnson, please. Do we have, do you want to give us a summary, or do you want to go right to questions, or what do you prefer?
I just have a couple questions about it.
Please, Ms. Osowski, you got the mic on?
Is this the same company that we've used for our other city buildings?
It is, yes.
And has it been going well?
It has been, yes.
Okay, do they have any access to the cameras or our security system once they're installed, or are they just out then?
There is, because, that's why we've stuck with one-
Okay.
Security, they secure our, both our network and some of our physical security, so part of our security policy has been to really limit the amount of access, so instead of having four or five different contractors, two or three different network contractors that have access, we've really tried to limit that to one contractor that can have access to it. They do have, because they're an overarching security in there, we can give them access when they need access. We can pull that back, and then everything that happens within the system is logged, so if anybody is to view any cameras, if they're, they're to delete or anything like that, it's all logged within the system, so.
Thank you. I move approval.
Got a motion approved from Ms. Osowski, second from Ms. Berg. Any further questions? Mr. Veen, one second, President Sandy, got Mr. Veen, I'll go right to you.
Who actually does the physical design of the security system? Obviously, cameras, there's, security is more than just cameras and it's making sure you have the right coverage, and do you do that yourself internally and just use them, or do they, as consultants, come and look at it and do the valuation of the property and make recommendations of how best to do it?
We do extensive walkthroughs with the designers, the consultants. In this case, High Point has been through the Public Works Building with-
Say that again, the statesman?
They've been through the Public Works Facility. We do walkthroughs with Sharon and Melanie and Lisa, we walk through. They've determined their needs, and then High Point takes that back with floor plans, designs out the control areas, and sets all that up for us.
President Sandy, please.
So Adam, where is High Point Networks? Where are they located?
High Point.
Where is there?
They are out of West Fargo.
Why aren't we using a local company for our local security?
Your question comes up quite commonly. Right now, to manage the size of network that we have and some of the scale of the size of buildings that we have, when we go out for these really large, for example, for a telephone system, the closest we get that can handle the size of our network, and the scope is some of the things we do is Minneapolis, Fargo. High Point is a, they have, their headquarters in West Fargo. They do a lot of work within Grand Forks, but they have engineers and experts in, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, maybe six or seven states, so if there isn't somebody in West Fargo that can answer the question for us, someone in their Bismarck office, one of their Montana offices, so on, so it's extensive, it's an extensive amount of engineers that can centralize on whatever particular part of security, whether that be network or surveillance.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Yep.
So does the cost include, like, upgrades as they come to and security upgrades, like, ongoing maintenance of those cameras year after year?
Yeah, it includes, there is license fees in order to have cameras, access control, all that accessible within the software. There is annual license fees, and we budget for that within the IT budget to cover that. We are just starting, and it's a, it's a, part of security is the, anything on the network, and since all of these devices are on our city network, patching and keeping current is a huge responsibility, and since our cameras are starting to grow and the number of door access controllers and everything else is growing, we are going to, we looked at it, what it costs for us to do it, and for a very minimal amount, we can actually have High Point do some of that patching for us on a monthly basis. If patch is needed, they'll do it. If not, they won't, but we can monitor all of it, and we can do it as well, but it's just one of those things that we don't want to have left behind.
Yeah, absolutely. Cool. Thank you.
All right, any further questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion to second, I believe, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
5.10, Dr. Sheridan, U N D Mae's Research Farm, Lisa Denham.
Mr. Brooks.
Yeah, I don't know if you're gonna be able to answer my questions, but I was-
Fifty-fifty.
I guess I would like to know what kind of research they're doing on our land and what exactly they're doing out there in the test field. what exactly they're doing out there in the test field. I think it's very great that we allow them to utilize that land at a very cheap cost, and I don't not support that. But I would like to know what type of research they are doing in that test field. Do you know, do they grow crop?
Yes.
Or, so is it crop?
It, it's a corn maize research.
Okay.
So he's doing research on different years of corn, and he's been doing this for many years. It started actually on the Ralph Engelstedt site. That's where his original plots were. Once he was forced out of that site, he went searching for some new sites. I think he may have had an interim site, and then he landed on our land, he needs water close and those types of things, because if you can see on that air photo, it's not a very big plot.
Right.
But it does save us from having to mow that area to where he's at. So we're getting some return out of having to pay for at least that portion where the plots are at to, to be mowed down.
Are they using any type of, like, test chemicals or anything that they're spraying on those crops that may be concerning to our citizens?
I do not know on that. I know he does, he does do the testing. I don't know if there's testing on, in terms of fertilizer, because I know he is a biological re, in terms of what department he falls under, it's biology.
Okay.
And so he's trying to, he's been raising different types of corn. He's been splitting and trying to grow different varieties.
Those GMOs, huh?
But I, I don't know if he's putting fertilizer on, because in the end, he's gotta be able to turn that over to the, a farmer to be able to grow. And so I'm not aware of if he's doing any fertilizer or not. I just wouldn't be able to answer that.
So you don't think that there is, like, any ti, any type of risk to the public, or he's not doing damage to our land out there?
I'm not aware of any. And that we, we can certainly do some follow-up and checking with them. I know that they're not about to plant, so.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate that. Just kind of see, you know, if they're using different types of fertilizers, pesticides, things like that. I would really like to know, so.
Yeah, I can follow up with them on that.
Okay, thank you. I move approval.
Motion to approve from Ms. Osowski, second for Mr. Veen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.11 is the parking contract amendment.
All right, thank you. Ms. Edwardson, thank you. Why don't you give us a summary on this one, and then we'll...
Yeah, absolutely. I can talk about, I'm here tonight to ask for approval of an extension to the current downtown parking contract we have with Interstate Parking Company, also known Dakota Parking Company. Paul Shetner on, online to answer any questions with Interstate, as well as interim Chief Love, to answer any questions we might have. But the sum of it is, is we've been working towards trying to figure out a dedicated prioritized enforcement for downtown. Spoke to you guys briefly about that as part of the budget approval, and the key point being downtown has grown to the point of needing to prioritize parking more than we've been able to in the past. And so trying to find that sweet spot in terms of dedicated enforcement is the goal, as well as a known service gap on the weekends for the ramps in terms of having morning checkups, cleanings, limited 24/7 reserve enforcement on the weekend for the ramps. So that, the combination of those two, the full-time downtown parking enforcement, which would do on-street enforcement as well as off-street. Off-street being the city ramps, the city lots, any other partnership we may come to an agreement with them on. And so that would be the encompassing of the enforcement, and then the cleaning would strictly be to the city-owned ramps, the central and the corporate ramp on the weekends. So that total combined, it comes to like an $85,000 and some change contract extension. Can certainly talk more about that, but the upshot is, is we're just looking for some more enforcement. And then I also have a general downtown parking update I can give. Kind of take a pause here to see if you want to go through the amendment first before I give a general process. Todd's telling me to keep going, so.
I think one of the broader questions, and why don't we stop there? And Dwight Love, maybe you can hit this, just from the PD side. Is this something that you guys are really looking for to take off your plate and maybe speak to that? Because for me, that's what it really comes down to more than anything else.
I think this adds consistency to the parking enforcement downtown. If we have a CSO, we get called away throughout the city, so we don't, we can't do it consistently. And if we want to change behavior and parking behavior downtown, we need to do it consistently, and this, this adds that. So it gives us the ability to free up our CSOs' time to respond to calls throughout the city, but it also gives us consistency in the enforcement. And hopefully that changes some of the behavior downtown, makes the business owners a little bit happy. I think we're willing to give it a try, so.
And what's the length of the contract? This is a year? Or what's the amendment?
So the contract terms, this would add to the original contract, which was a initial three-year, two-year extension, then it goes month-to-month. So we have about three years left in the initial overall five-year contract.
Okay. All right, any questions at this time? Ms. Osowski, please.
Okay, um, first off, I thought when we discussed this, we were just talking about parking ramps when this first came up. And so I was really disappointed before us as a city council. It's just another example of where the public is notified even before we're aware of the situation. It was posted on Facebook, I believe on the 23rd, that this was gonna happen, and this is, I mean, besides Friday, when I saw the agenda, that, that was the first I heard of it, of us switching. I thought this was only gonna be for parking ramps. I, I have a couple concerns about it. I guess my first concern that are, that I'll start with is, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that when we went over the budget, we gave our police department an extra, what, $95,000 to help control the parking? And now the police, and I love our police department, and so I'm not complaining about your budget, but I'm saying we put that in the budget, and now, and now the police department is still trying to get it off their plate. And I don't feel that, I mean, so where, where's the parking money going then? Are you, are you guys going to give that parking money back to us so we can help cover the cost of this?
Right, and some historical perspective here. I mean, we did get an extra CSO about a year or two ago, and that was taken away from us. So maybe that's what you're thinking about as far as the extra money. But we certainly don't have that third CSO anymore, so this replaces that. So maybe that's what you're thinking?
Um, I'm not 100% sure, but I, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, now we're adding things to ta, to take work off your plate, and I don't disagree with it at all, Mr. Love.
Nope, nope, that's right.
That's not where I'm trying to go. I'm, I'm just, I feel like now we're double-dipping in parking. You know, we give you guys money to cover parking, and now we're giving money to a completely different entity to, to cover our parking. So I'm just kind of wondering about that. And also, you know, this kind of, I know in the past I've mentioned, I don't think I spoke with you, but I know I've spoken with different police officers about, you know, trying to justify why we're giving some of this money to, like, CVIC or, or different entities even around Grand Forks. And all I keep hearing is, oh, it really lessens the load on our police department. It lessens the load on our police department. But at what point is a police department, you know, going to be able to take care of themselves and, and do this? Because I don't see your budget going down, but I see now we're giving money to these parking people to cover what initially was our GFPD's job. You know, we have to give money to CVIC to help with some of those things that we just don't have extra officers for, that you don't need an officer for. And so I'm just kind of trying to understand how, how this works. You guys don't want a job? We hire someone else to do it?
Well, here, here's what I think you're getting at. Our community service officers do a multitude of things. They're bailiffs, they respond to all sorts of animal calls throughout the city, and our town's getting bigger, and they're responding to more and more of these types of calls, okay? So they also do parking, but if they're doing these other things, they're not focused on parking. So the consistency to the parking downtown has been falling off. And that doesn't change the behavior and doesn't make the business owners downtown very happy when we can't dedicate our time 100% to parking. So that's where we're at. This would be more consistent parking enforcement downtown.
I, I understand that, and I don't disagree with you. Our population really hasn't grown that much, though, even over the past 20 years. And so that's where I'm just kind of trying to figure out. I do think this is a very slippery slope to continue to go down, to hire other people to take on duties that you guys don't have the time for, the manpower for. And, I mean, now it's parking. It might be something else that you guys might not have the time to do later on. And then what? Do we start hiring private security? I, I just think it's a very slippery slope to go down. And I understood the parking ramps and the cleaning and, and taking care of those, but as for downtown parking, I guess I, I don't agree with this. So, thank you.
President Sandy's got his hand up. If you want to go, President Sandy, please.
Yeah, thank you. So, Chief Love, perhaps, or Ms. Osowski asked the question not exactly the way I would have put it. Is the city council, have we just not dedicated the finances and the resources that you've needed to be able to have enough CSOs to do the job of parking enforcement, as well as all the other things that they get pulled away for?
Yeah, I would agree that that's probably the case. And the 30 years that I've been at the Grand Forks PD, we don't consistently have enough CSOs on at any given time to consistently do the parking enforcement downtown. We certainly can do it maybe 80% of the time, 70% of the time, but that's not how you change behavior. And we're trying to change the behavior of parking downtown and make the business owners happy, make the people that are actually paying to park in the ramp, you know, they, they feel they're getting their money's worth when, when everyone else is not paying to park in the ramp, and they are, they're parking for three, four, five hours, and, oh, to our parking downtown, because we can't consistently enforce.
Sure, so, in your opinion, if we were going to staff the PD, and Danny Weigle asked this question when we were talking about the budget, but I, I don't think we got, I don't think we actually boiled it down to its simplest form. Is it gonna take more than $95,000 worth of people to be able to provide the consistency that you think we would need? Or do you think we're better off having this contractor do it for what they're asking us to pay them?
I think the contract is the best solution, and I, I think we're not locked in forever. But I think this is something that we could try, because what's going on right now is not working. And if we hired one more CSO or two more CSOs, I think that would probably be more expensive with benefits and everything else for the, you know, I think this is probably the least expensive route, and it's something...
Good, so, thank you, I really appreciate the honesty, and I think I'll, I'll support pushing this contract forward. I also would like a, at some point, if you need more CSOs, if there actually is a need for that outside of parking enforcement as well, I'm hoping that your, that the police department's communicating that clearly with, with our city administration. Thank you very much.
All right, do we have a, Mr. Weigle, please?
I understand our contract goes for approximately three years total for the original item. Is there a way that we can have this for a one-year test or a one-year pilot and see how it's going, so we're not committed to the other two years?
How far are we into the first three? It's an amendment to the first three-year contract. Are we already into that? So is it not a full three to begin with?
This is where I'm gonna need Dan.
Okay.
Sorry.
The, the... Or do we have a gentleman on from Interstate as well, right? Maybe he knows the answer to that, or Dan, whoever wants to answer, I don't care.
I'm looking at, the original term is through March 31st, 2026, the initial term. And then upon completion of the initial term, it'll be continuing for two additional 12 months, so that gets you to the five-year term. To the extent that you wanted to negotiate a particular item that this provision lasts for a year, I mean, that's certainly, I mean, that's contract, you can certainly negotiate that with, with Interstate Parking, so that you've got, use this as a, as a kind of a one-off to see how, how it looks, and you can, you can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Gostad. I guess I wouldn't mind trying it for 2025, or we're only a couple days in, seeing where it goes. And then if we need to look at increasing our CSOs for the next budget, we can do that and, and see where we're at. But I just don't want to be locked into two, three years from now.
Why don't we do this knowing the first term's done, March 31st, 2026? That's, you know, we're January of 2025, that's only 16, 17 months. Why don't we just go till that date, and then when we have this, you know, automatic renewal, maybe we can put it in the verbiage that we'll have, you know, decision to make then. If we don't take action, it'll go forward if we decide to. Would that be a way to do it? Then at least give some start. And I guess the question would be to them as well. Do you, I mean, there's some costs, obviously, with you getting set up and getting employment. I mean, is that something you're comfortable with? And then I know President Sandy got a question as well, maybe he can, could answer that first, and then we can go from there. I forget your name on the screen there, but...
I'm, I'm Paul Schmetler. I'm one of the owners of Interstate Parking. Yeah, yeah, the investments we would make would be in, in buying a vehicle and equipping it with the license plate reading camera that the city uses. Right now, those camera systems are about $30,000, and to have, it wouldn't work to have a shared service, because unless you want to spend 30 grand on another camera system. But, yeah, we will buy a vehicle, and the city already owns the cameras. Our plan would be to transfer that camera from the city's vehicle into our vehicle. And, yeah, I'm comfortable doing it for a year. It's, we'll be able to provide back some empirical data on, on the results of our activities. And it's, it, it, it's a really good management tool for us to be able to control the measuring of our inventory in the parking system. It's, it's a little difficult, because we have free parking on both, both ends of the business day and the weekends, but a lot of people start free parking, and then they roll into the paid parking portion. And we really need often and consistent patrol so we can nail that, those timeframes down.
And as far as an annual expense of what would be, say, a year's time come up and we decide to pivot back to the CSO, the expense would be moving that LPR unit from the Interstate Parking vehicle back to this GFPD. I think it was around two grand, is around two grand to move that. So limited expense, and then the vehicle could still be utilized for some of the ramp cleanings in between, but that would still be amortized out. So that would be the cost implication of such a...
All right, Mr. Gostad had something quick, President Sandy, then we'll, we'll get right to you.
It was a comment you made, Mayor, it's, it's not an automatic renewal. It's, it's actually, it becomes automatic unless we provide written notice of termination 180 days before that March 31th.
Okay, so maybe for this amendment, can we just shorten that period of time and make it 30 days for just this amended part? That way, we got a full year to see if it's working. If we don't give them notice 30 days before March 31st, 2026, it'll keep rolling. Does that make sense to everybody? Gives them a year? Guess we'll see. President Sandy, please, yep.
Yeah, I, that's actually, the question that I was gonna ask was the termination. Perhaps 60 days would even be more fair. That way, they'll have the month of July to give all of the, to tabulate all of what happened in 2025. They can come back and, not the month of July, the month of January. They can come back January 2026 prior to a 60-day renewal notice and be able to report back to us. And then, it actually, I think it works out pretty well, because the end of March, we're just getting into budget season as well, so that'll give us time. And hopefully things go well. I assume that they're going to go well, and I, I'm taking it on pretty good faith, because they, they're a reputable company that does this all across the, the upper Midwest, that they'll report back, things will be going well, we'll be happy, people will be complaining, which means they'll be doing their jobs. And, and then ultimately, hopefully, we can continue to save some money, but also support our officers with some new CSOs if they need them. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, is that a motion, President Sandy, or just a statement at this time?
Certainly, I, I move approval.
All right, so...
With that, with the modification to the termination.
So, yeah, so it would be the, the 60 days then on, on the renewal period, so, on just this amended part. All right, so we got a motion, we have a second on that?
One second.
Got a second from Ms. Berg. All right, further discussion? All right, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Motion carries six to one with Osowski dissenting. Thank you.
5.14 Sanitation Collections Future Yard Waste Site Property Purchase.
All right. We've got Ms. Lipsch here. And Mr. Veen, did you have a follow-up question on this?
No, I, I think I fully understand the concerns of what, that I thought I'd, right here, just a bit more rationale for what you're doing and then I'm going to question it.
Can Mr. Veen use his microphone, please?
Oh.
Thank you.
I think it's on. He just isn't speaking very loud, so.
Yeah, his microphone hasn't been coming through all night. No problem. I'll listen closer.
Well, let's hear it again. Try to speak a little, yeah, more, see if it works in there.
Can you test it?
Why don't you?
Can you test?
You know what? President Sandy, I'll give him your mic since you're not here.
You can.
We'll give him President Sandy's. Can you hear this?
There. Can you hear me? No. Explain the problem. You talked a little bit about current locations next to schools and whatever aren't working. If you'd just follow up on that.
So in, in the presentation that I previously made, we talked about, um, some of the safety concerns at the schools with the kids playing at the playground and then this container sitting adjacent to the playground areas. It's, it's a safety concern for the drivers, right? The kids like to climb on them. And for the safety of everybody, we'd like to eventually not have them at those locations.
Which, which I support and makes sense. I guess maybe the question I had was this is a very expensive lot, is it not?
Um, I guess we, Ryan Brooks had Tammy Luzur look at the cost per square foot and it's.
It's over $10 a square foot, right?
Yes.
For?
4.33 acres.
For how much?
0.33 acres or 14, roughly 14,000 square feet.
Yeah. I just, I thought that was rather expensive for a yard waste site.
I, I think we're, I think it's for a good public use, but we are, it is on the south end of Grand Forks. It's adjacent to our wastewater pump station off of South Washington. And so I think to the, the private seller, they are, they are selling, you know, commercial land adjacent to either a commercial or residential corridor. So we are paying a market value for that. They are not giving us a discount because we're the city of Grand Forks and we're going to use it for a yard disposal area. And so we are paying a, um, a commercial cost to do this for the area. I think the other issue is, I think Ms. Lips showed the map. Most of our yard waste comes from the south end, but I think we have one site in a large swath of an area. So this is more so trying to better serve the south end of Grand Forks where a, a lot of the grass is coming from. And we thought this adjacent to a pump station on the south end would be a good investment if we look over the long term. But we are not getting a, a government discount on this land.
No, and I wouldn't have expected that, but it's still very, it's over $10 a square foot for, for this location, which is a rather expensive property. How much is it total for the lot?
Roughly $150,000.
$150,000, which I.
Will give us a substantial site though, and we'll be able to have a minimum of six containers, possibly even eight at this location. So as the city continues to grow to the south, it will be able to be expanded as well.
I just want to make one more point in that this is on the commercial corridor, good access. And so that was the other benefit and one of the reasons I think that, that price point is higher. If they were to sell to a, to somebody else, that $10 is probably a pretty good price actually of what they're going to get for South Washington, so.
All right. Any further comments or questions? All right. Do we have any motions on the matter?
No approval.
Got a motion for Ms. Osowski.
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Veen. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.18 Is the 2025 Chemical Bids for Water/Wastewater Treatment.
All right. Do we have, oh, we got Fred in here today. All right. Please step up. You want to hit that mic there? Is that one working? Why don't you give us a test?
Are we working?
Yes. Perfect. All right. Ms. Osowski, do you have some questions on the matter, please?
Yes, I do. It's that time of year again. Once again, I recommend that no one drinks the city water and I will continue to say that. But I have spent some specific comments on the fluoride, actually. How much money does the city of Grand Forks spend on fluoride every year?
For 2025, we're slated to spend $50,000.
$50,000.
Um, back in '25, it was right around $48,000. And in '23, $45,000. Because the chemical continues to go up in price. That's what's, the usage has basically stayed the same.
I'm surprised that it goes up in price, knowing that it is a byproduct of fertilizer and mainly just toxic waste. So that surprises me a little bit. Is there a hazmat sticker on the fluoride that you guys receive?
There's placards on the fluoride when we receive it.
Okay. Do you guys wear protective gear when you guys?
The driver does.
Yeah, handle the fluoride? Okay.
There's only certain, certain individuals that are allowed in those rooms.
Right.
When we are changing pumps, hoses and whatnot. And they do wear a hazmat suit when they do go into that room.
Thank you. Um, I've been talking about this for a long time now. Fluoride, although it does occur naturally, the fluoride that they put in our drinking water is a toxic byproduct of fertilizer. Fluoride use has been linked to thyroid problems, poor blood circulation, digestive problems and neurological problems. Also, for every one milligram per liter increase in your urine for the fluoride, it correlates to a 1.63-point drop in your IQ. This stuff is not healthy. It is the only treatment that the government mass issues to its citizens. And I consider it forced medication. Uh, I am going to make a motion tonight that we remove the fluoride from our drinking water here in Grand Forks. I have spoken, I understand that there are some concerns with low income and dental health. I have spoken with public health. Also, we could maybe use Spectra where we have a low-income dental office. Or maybe they could help administer to people who actually want the fluoride, um, some toothpaste of some sort that may, that people could go in and get fluoride if they choose to use it. I think that would cost us less than $50,000 a year to just get a pallet of toothpaste. But I do want a motion that we remove the fluoride from our drinking water in Grand Forks.
Okay. We got a motion. I'll look for a second, then we can open to further discussion. Yeah, sure. Okay. I, I do think that it'd be, it's worth a conversation. It's something that's in our city code, so we'd have to remove it from the city code. It's not something that we're required to do, so I think it's something that we can look at. It'd be nice to have experts in the field come and speak so we're not going off of, you know, one Google search versus another Google search. So if the council's, you know, open to doing that and having the further discussion, I think that makes, makes more sense than just eliminating. And then maybe you'll, you'll get exactly what you're looking for too. But at this time, it's, it's only a matter of having the ability to order. We're not actually ordering it now. We're just setting the price of what we would order it at. But.
I would still like it removed from the city water. I mean, my motion is still on the table that I would like that removed. I, I would look forward to maybe getting some professionals in here to educate the citizens on Grand Forks of, you know, the pros and the cons of fluoride. The only con that I've been able, or sorry, the only pro I've been able to find is for your teeth though. And it does a lot of other damage to your body. And I personally would never drink the city water, but.
Well, Ms. Osowski, we, I do have some peers of mine that are, I would deem fluoride experts. There's a gentleman named Dr. Johnny Johnson. He, I believe he's out of Florida. Um, and he's a, he's a, again, a fluoride expert and he's pro fluoride. Uh, and then also one of my colleagues from Bismarck is also a, what I would consider of an expert on the fluoride. So I can certainly have them come up and we can have a discussion, whether it's through council or, you know, off record. I don't, I don't, doesn't matter, but they're, they'd be more than willing to come up and, and talk.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Gostad, if I could just real quick, I mean, we, we've got, obviously this is in city code. We have to provide it until we would remove it from city code, from my understanding, through Melanie. Would the, was your motion to change the city code or to not order?
Yes.
Because I think that's where you're getting at, right? Okay. So is that what you understood the motion to be, Mr. Friedhoffs? Not that you're going to vote for it, but just so you understand that.
Also, yeah, so, so I have a comment about it. And so this may be one of the few times that I, I am agreeing with Rebecca on things.
Yes.
So, so I've done a lot of, I, long time, I come from a family dentist. And the reason this whole stuff was put in the water originally was because people didn't have access to fluoride. It was monumental. It was world-changing when they put fluoride in the water and it helped. Over the years, they've, you know, with, with the toothpaste already in it and everything else, I have a list. So this isn't monumental to take it out of the water. McVile, I pronounced this wrong, I apologize. Uh, North Dakota in late 2023 voted, the city council voted to stop fluoridization, making it the first city in North Dakota to do so. You say Florida, even Naples, Florida has removed, the city councils removed the fluoride from the city water supply. I have a list of 30, 40 counties around the country that have removed fluoride from the water. This isn't monumental. It's, um, something I think we definitely need to look into and research more. There is a, a grand list of things that it, it does cause. It's, it's not the fluoride itself, it's overfluoridization. And so now you get it in your water, then you get it in some toothpaste, you get it in your mouthwash and et cetera, wherever you're getting it. And it's the excess that's causing these problems. So sometimes I disagree with Rebecca, but I think this is something we really should look into. And having it put into the water, it does cause, you know, it's a, it's a forced medication, I believe.
All right.
For the record, we were approximately, oh, 10 years ago, I'm going back on memory here, we did come to council to ask we, to lower the fluoride concentration in the water. It was at 1.2 milligrams per liter. We are now down to 0.7. On average, we feed, we feed about 0.8 milligrams per liter of fluoride. And then you are correct, the, the problems occur when we start getting into that four milligrams per liter of it. I mean, we're reaching the MCL for the fluoride.
So, Mr. Gostad, I guess if this motion is approved, would you view this as direction to review the, the city ordinance and bring forth a change in the city ordinance for a later first reading, essentially? Is that how you would read this motion?
Yeah. And, and just so you know, the, the city ordinance is 15-0214. And it provides, um, the language that would probably have to be changed is, it says that the city water utility is hereby authorized, which isn't a problem, right? Because you can authorize something and, and, but it says authorized and directed to provide the means and to proceed with the addition of, you know, I won't go through the fluoride, basically, right? So you'd have to, if you wanted, you could completely remove, um, that ordinance in total or, or simply remove the language of being directed and, and simply authorize it. And then on an annual basis, you could go through the, the exercises to whether you wanted to authorize fluoride addition or not. There are multiple ways to deal, but, um, you know, the way the ordinance sets up right now is you're directed to provide this fluoride.
So how would you read the motion at this point, just knowing that we have, you know, we haven't advertised that we, you know, this was going to be, uh, as far as an ordinance change discussed, how do you, I guess, how do you proceed?
I don't think you can, I think you need to provide sufficient notice. So I would, I would take this as directive.
Okay.
To proceed with a ordinance change to 15-02, or 0214.
All right. I guess my point was, is this the first reading or are you directed and the first reading would be later? Okay. And I'm assuming that you want the ordinance completely removed, not just, uh, remove directed, Ms. Osowski?
Well, Mr. Gostad said, right?
The first part or the second part? Which part of what he said?
Well, I just want the fluoride out of the drinking water. I don't care if we have to change the city code. I, I don't care how it goes. So whatever Mr. Gostad thinks is the best way to do it, I trust his judgment. And if it's changing the city code, then I say we vote to ask Mr. Gostad to go and look at the city code in the best way.
Right. Well, you can remove, I guess, the, the point that he made is you can just remove the directed. He would just cross out directed and they're authorized too, but we would have to, we haven't directed them to. Or you can completely remove any ordinance where it says anything about fluoride altogether.
I would like to remove anything, everything about, about fluoride because I, it's forced medication.
All right. Mr. Gostad quicker than President Sandy's on there as well, so please.
Yeah, I, I think tonight's motion is simply to, to allow for this purchase. It doesn't mean that they're going to buy any of it. They can buy zero, is the way I understand, uh, the, the way the pending staff report is. So you could work on getting the ordinance changed and, and not really affect what's, what's happening tonight. Because at the end of the day, if you remove the ordinance, then any acquisition or, or purchase that you've allowed to occur wouldn't occur any longer. You're not, you're not obligating yourself to buy the fluoride, the way I understand the, the staff recommendation is tonight.
All right. So President Sandy, please.
I think, um, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not going to support this, not because I disagree with Ms. Osowski or Mr. Friedhoffs, but I, I think they raise very valid points in that we, none of us are experts in fluoride. I'm a little bit concerned because we can all read on the internet and what Ms. Osowski reads might be the same as what I'm seeing. It might be completely different, same with Mr. Friedhoffs. I would like to actually hear from people who perhaps are actually experts in this before we make such a dramatic change. Uh, I, I, I also come from a family of dentists and of course they're, uh, very adamant that fluoride is so important to, to our community. But again, they're, they're old. And so back then we needed, as Mr. Friedhoffs pointed out, we needed it for, for our teeth. So I'm not convinced that, that it's necessary anymore. I don't know. I, I would like to take some time and actually see if we can hear from people that, that are more of an authority than, than you or me or anyone. Thank you.
I guess the way I read that, and I, I think so, if we do get a, a no vote tonight, I think we should bring it back and, and further discuss it. With us not having an ordinance to be able to and directing you to, to create an ordinance, that can all be a part of that in the future. So I guess I'm fine with either way. I guess that's going to be up to council or they want to go with the motion. But then we should go back to the motion on the, on this, this item itself particularly as well. So I guess that's up to, to council, how you want to go for it. What makes the most sense, I guess, to you, Dan, as far as, Mr. Gostad? As far as knowing, I'm, I'm assuming they can't be here in two weeks. The, you know, the guy's coming or any, I mean, I think we should have experts that aren't just pro fluoride. We should have someone that's, that's anti-fluoride as well. So we've got both perspectives.
Yeah. All I have is the pro in, in my industry.
So we need to gather a little bit more information on both sides of the argument, I think makes sense. And what do you think, I guess, give me, give us, as a council, some guidance on the best path forward?
I will take direction of the city council.
Okay.
But it sure seems to me that what President Sandy has, has discussed is, and I've said this, I think, in other topics, not just on fluoride, but other topics, is it's always best to get educated on the topic before you make a decision on something. And I think that's what President Sandy is, is advocating.
Perfect. Perfect. And I guess to my point is if it gets a no vote, that doesn't mean it's going away. We'll still bring everybody together, just so you're clear on that, um, Mr. Friedhoffs and Ms. Osowski. So.
And real quick, we could check with, you know, McVile, North Dakota and see how, how they went about doing it and what research they did. So.
You're talking about McPhil?
Yeah. Sorry. Apologize.
McVile. It's our horrible place to live. All right. So we got a motion in a second. Is there a further discussion on this particular motion, Mr. Bean?
Yeah. I would, can you hear me? Okay. I would, I would disagree. I think Grand Forks has amazing water. I think the quality of the water hits and meets every federal standard that's out there, which includes and allows for fluoride. Um, but if we do make a change, like you've talked about, it needs to be based on current data. I think just as Mr. Sandy said, and, and so regardless of the way this vote goes, I hope we can bring that back. Cause I've had this discussion. In fact, Ms. Sowski and I went out and visited the water treatment plant and we did a walkthrough of this whole thing. And I think that biggest question you had, as I remember, was fluoride. That has not changed and it's going to continue to come back every year, I would assume as time goes on. But I would not discourage people from drinking our water. I think it's amazing. I can tell you from a personal standpoint, I came in from a farm where I had cavity year after year. As soon as I came to Grand Forks, it ended. Personal experience was no, I haven't had a cavity, cavity since that point in time. And the only thing that changed was my drinking water. So I, I believe that there's benefit to fluoride and it's, it's my personal, uh, um, and I do think we have very, very good water. But if we get good data, and I promise that, that would support that, then I would gladly easily listen to that. Uh, things have changed with the availability of it and, and maybe there's a new way or a better way to do it, but, uh, not today until I have better data.
All right. So we got to get a couple of experts. I think we need a dentist to check Mr. Bean for cavities too, as part of this, but, uh, just to make sure that statement was true. All right. Any, any further discussion then on, on Ms. Osowski's, uh, motion? All right. Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote on that. Ms. Storsted.
Osowski.
Yes.
Berg?
No.
Weigel?
No.
Lunskey?
Yes.
Friedhoffs?
Yes.
President Sandy?
No.
And Bean?
All right. So that motion was defeated three to four. You got the, all right. So now we're, we're still back on five 18.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve from Ms.-
We move approval.
Got a second from Mr., uh, President Sandy. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes four to three with the same. There was other chemicals in there other than the fluoride in that bid that we would need to stay alive?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So I'm glad that that did approve. And then we'll look to bring that, um, sometime in Q1, can, towards the end of Q1, could you get that done, Mr. Phelan?
Wish, we do it every, we're here every week somehow. We'll get it back here at a communal hall meeting. Look forward to it.
All right. Well, we got five 20 and five 22 left. Uh, Ms. Storsted.
Five 20 is the 2025, 26 wastewater fog abatement program, project 8897.
All right.
I don't have any specific questions. I'd just like a real quick, quick rundown of it is what I would like.
Um, for years, we've been struggling with what's called fat soils and grease within our collection system. So in our sanitary sewer system, um, it collects in our pump stations and it can, um, it can cause, I guess, if it's not addressed, it can cause issues and clog, um, up our sanitary sewer system. So in one particular area that feeds downtown, it's a fairly large area. Our lift stations are split. Um, we had like a, a 10 foot, I'm sorry, not a 10 foot, 10 inch mat of grease that just stuck in there and the staff would have to go in and chip it and actually have to suck it out. Um, since then we've been looking at just different options. When we started working on the bio solids project down at the wastewater treatment plant and biodredging and treating that more naturally, we actually talked with the same company, um, and they proposed us working together. So we did a pilot project in 2022. And so we had success there and just have continued to use, um, that as an option, not as an option, as part of our operations and maintenance. And so therefore last year we reviewed the fat soils and grease and we adjusted our fee schedule. And so we're trying to right size how much money we spend on, um, treating the issues as well as educating and then bringing in fees to address the issue. So that's what this will continue to support.
Um, can you tell me just a little bit about the, the fee portion, I guess, is what I'm the most interested in? Like how, do they pay? Like who pays the fees?
We have a four different categories that we put together. Um, we charge a fee that's between $5 and $20 a month. And that goes to like the larger restaurants, like a Texas Roadhouse, who has an interceptor that they clean it out regularly. We would charge them $20 a month. I believe that's the current fee for them. But we just, we try to monitor certain areas. Um, you know, the hotels that have breakfasts that they serve on the weekends, we charge them a small fee just so that we can monitor them and continue to educate them. And they're in these kind of problem areas that we do treatments in. And so we identify everybody. We've included apartment buildings that are a certain size as well.
Oh, okay.
Because they're discharging a certain amount of, um, fat soils and grease as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you. No other questions. I move approval.
Motion to approve from Ms. Osowski, second from Ms. Berg. Further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And five point 22, Ritter Valley Water Supply Project Memorandum of Commitment.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Goss, this is a prime example of when the attorney's, uh, review and approval, um, gets reviewed and not approved. It needs to get adjusted. So why don't you, uh, give us the synopsis of, uh, this?
There, the, uh, it's redlined. You can see the changes. Um, and as we've said the last time, if there was a substantive change that we found, we'd bring it back to the council. And the substantive change was really, uh, directed at the PPA. There still is, it's really an early draft format. Um, and so the changes are directed at, um, and I think that the, if you take a look at the, what's in yellow is that we'll go ahead and negotiate in good faith, um, and enter into, into this PPA as long as the terms and conditions are satisfactory to the participant and the participant to the city of Grand Forks. Um, interestingly, we're the only city that made, requested these changes. All the other, uh, participants signed off on this without change. Um, so I think it was a kind of a small victory, uh, in seeking these changes because we're not committing ourselves, the way it was drafted, it, it appeared that we were committing ourselves to a PPA that still needs, uh, significant work in the, in the negotiation.
And I, I guess I would just also, I'm, I'm in agreement to, of approving this tonight, but we, there are several documents that I've requested from Garrison Division from Black and Beach there, contractor, financial documents, some other strategic information. So a lot of that review is ongoing, but I think this memorandum of, of commitment really pertains to our D2 financing and our, our current amount of water that we're nominating for. So, uh, there is, there is a microscope over this project and it will, will continue. But, um, as far as this, I think with those changes, we're comfortable, uh, moving forward just as my position on the law board. Um, so wanted to add that. All right.
If I could?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Bean, please.
No, I, I have to concur. I think it was a good catch to, to get that and make sure we're understanding, uh, and everybody else's understanding what the request was. And it's super, the PPA is super critical, but me, one of the most critical documents that's still to come. But, but, and the reference to that, but, uh, I just commend you guys. It was a good catch and I'm glad we brought it back for modification and I make a motion to approve.
I got a motion from Mr. Bean, second from Ms. Berg. Any further questions or discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right. That's it for item five. Item six, information items there are none. So item seven, approval of minutes and bills.
Seven point one is the vendor list and engineer's estimate.
All right. We got a motion to pay the bills.
Move approval.
Ms. Osowski, uh, um, motioned and Ms. Lunskey seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Seven point two are your minutes from December 16th.
I move approval.
Got a motion as this from Ms. Osowski, second from Ms. Berg. She beat you to it, Mr. Friedhoffs. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item eight, uh, we're going to kick off the new year with some citizen comments, general of nature. Nothing for the, for 2025. Everything's been running perfectly for six days. Good to hear. All right. Uh, Mr. Phelan.
For the record, our drinking water system is safe. Um, and as you heard tonight, we have, um, really great professionals that make sure, um, we're safe day to day. And I, I can't think of a better public health, um, system that was created, um, than our, uh, drinking water systems across the United States and how it's elongated our lives and made our lives better. So I want to make sure everyone knows that for the record. And we have tremendous professionals that make sure everyone is safe, um, every minute of the day. Also want to make a note, as was just noted, um, we have some really great wastewater, um, workers too, um, that again, do some extraordinary things from a public health perspective and can, can we, we can hardly imagine, because we have such a, um, great standard of living, what it was, um, before we had drinking water systems and wastewater systems in our country. So, um, those are two systems that, uh, we should be quite proud of. We have great operators, great systems, and they afford us a great quality of life here in Grand Forks. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Uh, we want to 10 mayor and council member comments. Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
Um, yeah, I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I look forward to 2025 and I do hope that this is the year that us as Americans push China to forfeit American farmland. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Ms. Berg, any comments this evening?
No, thank you.
Ms. Lunskey, any comments? No. Mr. Friedhoffs?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bean? All right. Uh, the Vice President Weigel, any comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
President Sandy.
Mayor, we read your proclamation. Radon is a silent killer. It is really easy to check out, uh, the radon detectors from the public library. They're very helpful at the library, showing you how to use them. Everyone should do it if they have any concern. Essentially every home in Grand Forks is susceptible and probably has high radon. Everybody should get a radon reduction system. Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, President Sandy. You just reminded me something. I don't know if Ms. Wall's still here. She, I was also supposed to say winter is the best time to test for radon as well. So there you go. Add one more to that. All right. Just, uh, mayor's comments. I don't really have much. Just want to wish everybody a happy new year. And going into 2025, I think there's going to be some, uh, some really big and exciting projects coming up and excited to move a lot of things forward for benefit of the community. So we're ready to get to work. 2024 is gone. Time to roll up our sleeves and continue to work in 2025. So with that, I'd be looking for a, a motion to adjourn.
I move adjournment.
Got a motion from Ms. Osowski, second from Ms. Berg. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned.